Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Brent Newman. I'm the Senior Policy Director in Louisiana for the National Audubon Society. And I'm here to speak to you very briefly today about support for our partners in Energy Future New Orleans Coalition's proposal for a management audit and the resolution as written today. There are just three points of the presentation that was made today I would like to underline very briefly as you dig into the RFQ and discuss the best candidates for this management audit. One, for obvious reasons, it should be third party. Two, it should be thorough. As a lot of folks who are part of EFNNO and are who on the council today have pointed out, Entergy New Orleans and the issues that we have faced did not stop at the parish line. This should be something that looks at everyone from the linemen on the ground all the way up to top management at Entergy corporate because through their own processes, planning efforts, they are holding back the city of New Orleans from being the resilient place that we know it can be. And the third is the management audit should be actionable. As Mr. Robigo pointed out, as Monique and Jesse have both said, the outcome of this should be an action plan, steps that you should take to make New Orleans a more resilient city. In response to Councilmember Palmer's question, that's how you hold each other accountable, is by setting dates, looking at measurable objectives, and taking this action plan from fruition to the end of the day. One last point I'd like to make very briefly is around this time of year, you know, last year with the hurricanes, it's hurricane season. And a term that you hear thrown around an awful lot is the concept of resiliency or to be a resilient place. Resiliency is not a merit badge to be given out to a community or a group of people who barely survived a disaster. Actual and meaningful resilience is investment in natural and man-made systems so that people are protected and they have what they need before and after a disaster that was by all implication affected by climate change. Can Entergy New Orleans provide that? And what processes, policies, and people are preventing it from happening at this point? That is what this audit should demonstrate. In the 16 years since Hurricane Katrina, we've seen the Army Corps of Engineers and the CPRA beef up our coastline, emphasize the protection system that we have around our parish. At my house during, or in post-Ida, we had enough energy to, from my generator, to run the fiber optic cable that AT&amp;T so I could work from home even without power. What has Entergy been doing for the past 16 years to provide that kind of resiliency? These are the questions we'd like to see answered by this audit, and for that, we support the audit, and thank you all for taking this on.
Thank you. Jasmine Fournier, you still here? I don't see her. And then Andy Kowalczek. Andy, did you want to comment on this?
So I'm going to kind of call back to my previous comments. And first, let me introduce myself properly. I didn't do that last time. I'm a consultant that works with the Energy Foundation, and I'm also representing 350 New Orleans today and Energy Future New Orleans. It's obvious that I strongly support this motion, and you know, I think that we should not delay on this because the kind of culture that's being cultivated in Entergy is aimed at using the grid as a tool to maintain profits and maintain market power. There's been a lot of writing in my circles about, you know, how you can use the transmission system to really build market power. And what's been lacking is just a recognition that utilities and certain utilities play a huge role in the MISO stakeholder process. Considering the amount of electricity that's sold in the MISO South region, the Entergy territory covering four states, it's not something that we should overlook, is the fact that they have a lot of control over the region's decisions around the transmission system. It's my hope that, you know, this topic is included. And, you know, again, I thank you for your leadership, Chairwoman Moreno, on sending that letter and sending a clear message that regulators are paying attention to what's happening in transmission planning. And I think holistically, this is an excellent first step to bolstering credibility and creating a functional energy system for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalczek. Okay. Seeing no further comments, and, oh wait, Aaron, do you have a public comment? Two. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. The first comment is from Lena Alfieri Stern. Current address 2514 St. Philip Street, 70119. Former address 6321 Patton Street, 70118. This is my story. Following a house fire in 2013, our family had the challenge to rebuild our home. We installed an array of solar panels on our new roof in 2014. I was pleased with the benefits of solar, such as local, lower electric bills, the low maintenance of the panels, none, and their durability during hurricanes. What was missing was the ability of the panels to power the home during grid outages, which requires battery storage. At the start of the pandemic last year, I decided I wanted the security of battery backup. Through 100% financing and the federal tax incentive of 26%, I purchased two Tesla Powerwall batteries from New Orleans local company Solar Alternatives, who completed installation within one day in April 2020. Since then, there have been numerous storms and grid power outages, and my solar battery setup has performed seamlessly and without fail. A screenshot from the Tesla Powerwall Batteries app taken eight days after Hurricane Ida shows that following the failure of the grid, the house's solar and battery setup provided seamless and continuous whole-house backup power for over 195 hours, eight-plus days, without the use of gas or any other inputs except the sunshine. The app also shows that since battery installation in April 2020, there have been 43 backup events that provided a total of 257 hours of battery solar storage, and that all that power plus the daily energy generated by the panels is free of charge. Too good to be true? Well, it's true. I believe that the sun's power belongs to each and all of us, and the peace of mind that exists when families and businesses can take care of their, for their own basic needs in time of crises benefits everyone in our community. Low-income families especially are in need of such resilient resources. Providing solar battery setups to low-income homeowners provides them with the means to weather storms, be safe in their homes, save money on electricity, and get back to work faster in the event of a disaster. This is another and most efficient way to keep, to take care of ourselves, to take care of our essential workers. By helping the most vulnerable, we always end up helping all of society. It's not trickle-down, it's lift-up, and it works for all of us. It really works. A picture is worth 1,000 words. Max Chardulo. The Fair Housing Action Center supports all motions and resolutions being considered today to hold Entergy accountable for its pattern of lies and failures, especially this independent management audit requested by Energy Future New Orleans. LAFHAC spoke against the Entergy gas plant in 2018 because we know that utilities are an outsized share of housing costs in New Orleans and that Entergy has failed for years to upgrade its infrastructure or implement energy efficiency solutions for ratepayers. Now, three years later, we know that the Black Start capability promised at the gas plant didn't exist when it was truly needed, and we have even more evidence that Entergy has failed to invest in its infrastructure. Ensuring Entergy does not pass the cost of its failures on to us is just the first step we expect from this council. We are tired of a utility company motivated by profits, and we strongly support the council investigating new options to provide power in a way that is actually accountable to ratepayers. The occasional fine is clearly not enough to get Entergy or its Wall Street investors to change their priorities. We need a long-term commitment from council members, even after the elections, to hold this company accountable and ensure we're putting people first, not shareholders. That is the last comment.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. All right, seeing no further comments, I'll make a motion to adopt. If I can get a second, please. It's been seconded by Councilmember Brissette. All in favor? Five yays, no nays, and that moves on to the full council to the regular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, once again.
Okay, that brings us to item number five. This is motion 21341, Utility Ownership Reform Report Request for Qualifications and Proposals. The committee will consider a motion authorizing council staff to issue a request for qualifications and proposals for a consultant. So this particular study is really a result of all of us council members up here receiving so many questions from the public about what are other options? You know, what about bringing in competition? What about bringing in another company? What does that take? And the honest answer is that it is not that easy at all to do any of these things. And but, but that actually needs to be studied and really looked at. Like, what are all the different types of options that are out there? And so the reason for this study is so that our ratepayers can get answers to those questions in a real substantive way, so that we can see what will work, what won't work, how costly it is or how not costly it is, and all the different steps procedurally that we would have to go moving forward if something were to happen, what that looks like as well. So that's what this is. It's moving forward on getting a consultant to then work on this particular study. So any questions? No questions coming from the dais. What do I have?
I don't know. I guess my only question about this is, is it, how robust is this going to be? Because I worry-
We haven't written the scope yet.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, I think it needs to be, if we're going to say municipal ownership, I mean, that's a lot for a city to handle.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but it's not just looking at municipal ownership. I know that there's been a lot of attention on that, but, you know, I mean, this is for all different types of options. And the resolution, it talks about, you know, whether it would be, for lack of a better term, whether it's a nonprofit coming in, whether it's additional competition coming in, is it another company buying it? I mean, but, you know, it's just looking at all different types of options. But this is just the RFP, so we could write the scope of everything that you would want included in their study once we select the consultant.
Yeah, I appreciate that because while I have no doubt that there are better ways to look at building the mass trap at the same time, that making sure that we have particularly a very clear-eyed view of what the city is capable of and what it's not-
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. And then if you look at what's happened with, you know, municipalization efforts in other cities, they've certainly taken many years and have been, you know, quite costly. So what does, what does it look like, or look like in other cities when they've tried to do it? So like I said, it's just, let's look at this analysis, let's see what, what it shows. We're not pushing one way or another, but the public does deserve to have the answers to what are their options and what would it take or not take to get one of these options Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. Aaron, are these that you handed me, are these for this agenda? Okay. Chris Lawrence, and then followed by Susan Miller.
Hi, good morning, City Council. My name is Chris Lawrence, President against the Forces of All Evil, a nonprofit organization. Me and New Norman are on the same page. Trees, branches, limbs, they are, they are hassed to power lines. Why we can't cut them 12 months a year? Why we can't manage trees, limbs, and branches? Baton Rouge, my neighborhood, I don't have power lines. I live in East New Orleans. I live in a small subdivision. The whole entire city of Baton Rouge, no power lines. Everything's underground. Let's bring this to New Orleans. Hell, the price with the cost, let's bring it to New Orleans. Let's explore sunlight, solar systems. The sun is there to give us light. Let's explore optic fiber. Let's explore for the future, okay? What's safer, underground or power lines? Underground is safer, regardless of what NAPSI said. We need somebody to come in and manage our utilities. Let's get Entergy of Louisiana. Let's get them a 10-year contract. I don't want to see nobody fired from NAPSI. They could work for Entergy of Louisiana. All right, tornadoes. Tornadoes, they could tear up power lines. Power lines are danger, okay? It's not safe. Underground, they have a storm, and we got underground electricity. Wires can't follow them cars, people, okay? You get where I'm at? Think for the future. Let's think for the future, okay? So everything I said about solar, the sunlight, let's do it. I mean, regardless of what the money costs, get a grant from federal government. Biden's going to give it to us. Cedric Richmond's up there, that's our pipeline. Troy Carter, you know, so what's going on with New Orleans?
Thank you, sir.
You know, let's make it right.
Thank you.
All right, next mayor.
I appreciate your comment. All right, one more, and that is, wait, where'd you go? There you are, Susan Miller, come on up, sorry.
Thank you. Susan Miller, representing the Alliance for Affordable Energy and Sierra Club. We greatly support this study. As a matter of fact, I believe it was over 10 years ago that the Alliance initially asked the City Council to do this type of study. And while I would love to work the refs the way Entergy did and discuss specific proposals, I don't think you need that today. This study is going to cover a lot of different issues, and I think that's good. One issue that isn't mentioned specifically, but the council member might be interested in, is what's called electric restructuring, where essentially generation is take, is the utility is required to divest its generation, and people can choose their electricity supplier so they can choose solar or other things, and that's one thing that this study can address, and we think that's good. The only thing I would like to mention, since Entergy's the one who brought up Entergy Louisiana purchasing Entergy New Orleans, is Congresswoman Moreno mentioned MISO and the stakeholder process. I assume you're aware, and if you're not, you should be, that Entergy hired a consultant to participate in MISO stakeholder proceedings and not tell people they work for Entergy. These are not good-faith actors. You have to keep that in mind in every investigation you do and every decision you make. They have shown time and time again that they do not operate in good faith, and it's your sad duty to make sure that the citizens of New Orleans are protected from that. Thank you.
And to be clear, that was not somebody from Entergy, I mean, it was not Entergy New Orleans or Entergy Louisiana, Entergy Mississippi.
It was Entergy corporate.
Entergy corporate, right.
I didn't intend to imply anything else.
All right, so that's all the public comment. Aaron, do I have any online public comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The first comment is from Nicolette Jones. I am writing in support of motion 21341 and request that council members act quickly to implement recommendations of the report in order to, one, reduce energy costs for residents, modernize and strengthen transmission infrastructure so that residents do not experience extensive outages during storms, and finally, that reduce the city's resilience on fossil fuels as energy sources. I commend C.M. Moreno's efforts to hold Entergy accountable and advocate on behalf of ratepayers and residents. It feels that for far too long, the City Council has done little to advocate for modern and progressive energy policies and instead largely gave Entergy the green light to conduct business as usual with minimal oversight. I understand that that is a broad generalization. However, the council's approval of the power plant in the east was a major mistake, as evidenced by its inability to perform as promised during Ida. I support this effort and urge council to make sweeping change to modernize the city's energy infrastructure. Charmaine Champagne. Even before the hurricane, the Entergy's service has been atrocious, from outlandish billing to blatant unprofessional treatment of customers, the experience is unacceptable. One, they charged me $180 for my property when it was vacant for a month. Two, I transferred the account from my old tenant to myself for a better transfer experience. Instead, they actually cut off the electricity and gas instead of a seamless transfer they assured me of. My new tenant did not have electricity for a week and then sent me a bill for $354 for three weeks of service. They claimed that someone had to be present to reconnect the service, then told my, then told by employees of Entergy that it can be done by a flip of a switch. Three, they don't handle their own billing, and when you call the billing agency, the number disconnects, the number disconnects you, so you can't pay your own bill. When you call Entergy, they claim they can't tell if you paid your bill. I was told that I was supposed to call them to tell them a bill was paid. You call and wait on the phone for hours, yes, all day sometimes, to get someone on the line, and if it is around the end of the day, they, they phone call just terminates because they have knocked off of work. I have had a choice, if I had a choice, I would never use this energy company, but I do not have a choice. Entergy costs are ridiculous, extremely dissatisfied, but with this company, it is not fair to the residents of this great city to have such incompetence in an essential service. Teddy McGlynn. Given the events of this past storm and preceding years of Entergy's failed updates of the grid to make it more storm-resilient, I, as a resident, would like to see the energy company transition to a public utility operated directly by the city of New Orleans. Julia Marshall. To the Honorable Council of the City of New Orleans, Entergy New Orleans has proven itself time and again to be a rogue actor, which has consistently trampled on the interests of the people of New Orleans. Your responsibility, council, is not to Entergy, it is to the people of our fair, though currently smelly, city. Entergy has resisted hardening its crumbling infrastructure to natural disasters, has wasted resources of the people of New Orleans as the council is forced to hire consultants valued in the millions of dollars in attempts to rein in the utility monopoly. It is timed that the city of New Orleans and the people of New Orleans construct resilient solar microgrids with system redundancies that prevent the entire string of Christmas lights from going out when it is most critically needed. Councilmembers, the people of New Orleans roasted in their homes due to the deliberate actions of Entergy. Eleven people are dead due to Entergy's negligence. It is critically important that restaurants and corner stores be given the option of becoming first responders in the event of a disaster. If outfitted with solar and off-grid batteries, such establishments would be a first line of defense against heat stroke and could be hubs for residents to charge their phones or run critical healthcare devices such as heart monitors or home oxygen delivery systems. Honorable councilmembers, I saw a woman in my neighborhood walking in the heat of the day with two small children and no car. She was hot, her children were hot and dehydrated. They did not have access to drinkable water due to power loss to the city's water treatment centers. Power loss during a heat wave is not just an inconvenience, it is life-threatening, even for able-bodied individuals. Fire the power monopoly. They have proven time and again that they will stop at nothing to profit from our tax dollars while providing us an antiquated power grid that goes out repeatedly even the absence of natural disasters. We can divest, we can innovate. New Orleans is well-positioned to become the first American city to harden itself and retrofit itself in the face of climate change. Entergy is not Goliath. We outnumber them, or they would not have, they would not have to hire paid actors in an attempt to, an attempt at seeming larger than they are. Fire Entergy. Thank you. Carol Sloan. I'm a member of Together New Orleans, not a member of the leadership, an individual member. We demand City Council 100% renewable by 2040. New Orleans needs to lead against climate change. Councilmember, that was the last comment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Spears. I will make a motion to adopt. It's been seconded by Council Vice President Glapion. Sorry, just waiting on the technology here. There we go. Oh, I'm missing five yays, no nays, and this moves on to the council agenda for tomorrow, the regular agenda. That brings us over to item number six, the Formula Rate Plan. The committee will consider a resolution directing Entergy New Orleans to delay the implementation of any new rates. Entergy has requested an increase in rates through the Formula Rate Plan provision of our rate case, an annual checkup that allows the company to request increases to help them meet their return on equity. Unless the council acts by November, by contract, these requested rates will go into effect automatically. We continue to review this request and scrutinize every line of their request to ensure ratepayers do not pay for inappropriate or unrelated items. That process continues. At this time, though, we know that Hurricane Ida has placed an enormous economic burden on our people. This resolution is recommended for approval so our team can further consider next steps. Any questions? Seeing none. Is this for the FRP right here? Yep. Okay. Public comment, Jesse George, followed by Andy Kowalczek. And then Milo, can't get your last name, Milo.
Thank you once again, Jesse George. Again, on behalf of the Alliance for Affordable Energy, I'll be brief. Even before the low-pressure system that became Hurricane Ida formed in the Caribbean, Entergy had pending before the council applications for a rate increase resulting predominantly from investment in fossil fuel infrastructure, including the New Orleans Power Station, as well as an application for storm recovery costs resulting from Hurricane Zeta last year. That Entergy would apply for a rate increase in the midst of a global pandemic when the COVID-19 Delta variant is surging through the state, when so many in this city composed of more than 50% renters face imminent eviction and economic precarity, reveals the company's callousness and disregard for the community it is privileged to serve as a monopoly. Now that Ida has passed, we can be sure that Entergy will come shambling forward, palm open, demanding that ratepayers finance its planning failures. New Orleanians know that because of Entergy's decrepit infrastructure, our power goes out if we sneeze too hard. Yet at every turn, the company denies any responsibility for the unreliability of its service, even stooping to blame the birds. However, we are savvy enough to see through Entergy's act of pretending to be surprised each year by hurricane season. Entergy cannot be allowed to continue profiting off of climate disaster and the ruination of our city when its preferred business model of heavy investment in fossil fuel infrastructure is exacerbating the climate crisis, helping to increase the frequency and intensity of hurricanes. How many storm recovery riders can our already outrageously high bills bear? The council, I would reiterate that Entergy is not guaranteed a profit, only the opportunity to earn one without competition. ENO is not entitled to recover for its own failures of planning and leadership and acts of malfeasance. The council must take action to freeze rates at their current level until it can conduct a thorough audit of ENO. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Kowalczek, followed by Milo Derringer? I hope that's right.
Hello. So I just want to footnote everything that Jesse just said. I think that we need to, there's a lot of things that are, have been discussed today, and I think that it's very important to work through all of those processes, including the management audit, including, you know, the costs for investments, before we consider any kind of rate increase or even reckoning with how the rates break down. It's important, you know, to freeze this rate case, and I support this action very much, but I think as it's reapproached in the future, we need to look at the return on investment seriously. And you guys are all here because a corporation is going to go after their bottom line every time. That's the role of regulators, to make sure that the, there's a line between corporate gain and public goods. And, you know, I appreciate this today. I think this is very timely that we suspend this, and yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks. Milo? All right, I don't think Milo's still here. All right, we lost Milo. Aaron, do we have any public comment?
Yes, councilmember. Carly Rachel. Entergy cannot up our rate for sub-power service. My power will go out at the slightest gust of wind. During Hurricane Ida, my power was out from August 29th through September 6th. We had to leave the city because of the heat and lack of power with our elderly dog for fear she couldn't cool off and would die. We cannot and should not pay for a service that left much of the city in 100-plus heat for multiple days after lying about the capability of the recently constructed power plant. Charlotte Fournier. Resident of New Orleans, should not have to pay higher rates to make up for what seems to be Entergy's mishandling of energy resources or their unpreparedness to face a hurricane knowing full well that their electrical grid will have to endure these types of storms. With climate change clearly affecting us now and more storms to come, Entergy needs to take responsibility and prepare for the future, not at the cost of the customer. Vera Lester. Entergy LLC reported $1.6 billion in profit in the four quarters prior to Hurricane Ida. To increase fees in New Orleans for the second year in a row is unreasonable, unconscionable, and immoral. Require Entergy to put people over profits for once. Pepper Rousseau. In an August 30th WWL article, Entergy Louisiana CEO Philip May said first that Ida's winds were simply too powerful for those transmission lines to bear, and followed up with the fees customers paid for hardening infrastructure were well-spent fixing previous storm damage and expanding with new structures that can take more of a beating in storms. Then he emphasized that only one of the seven remaining transmission corridors needs to be restored to get outside power flowing back into the metro area from the Regional Power Sharing Grid Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, MISO. Odd then, on September 3rd, Group President for Utility Operations at Entergy, Rod West, told MSNBC that on the back end of the Ida damage assessment, they could count those 10,000 poles and 2,000 transformers that were destroyed in the storm. He went on to say that they always, that they always prepared, but the problem was the rapid intensification- the rapid intensification of the storm from a Cat III to a near-Cat V hurricane. However, the damage candidly was in line with what our expectations had, had it been a Four or Five, but the most significant fact was that it intensified as it got to the coastline. And I would like to point out that wind speeds, where there are no power lines, do not impact power. I feel like a mark in a game of Three Card Monte, where Entergy is using sleight-of-hand to swindle ratepayers. Bottom line is that, once installed, power plants, poles, transformers, and the lines, they are all just what they are. They do, however, need to be maintained because they collect billions of dollars annually, and surely maintenance is in the budget. So that is why the catastrophic failure of Entergy post-Hurricane Ida is so confusing. Outages peaked at over 900,000 households, and according to a 9/20/21 WDSU article, there are still 17,000 homes without, without power. But why exactly? If the damage was in line with what would be expected, why are thousands of customers still without power? Zoe Johnson. We already, we already pay extremely high rates, and every option should be exhausted for additional state and federal funds to pay for repairs before that cost is passed on to customers. Jamie Braun. Before the storm, a power surge had randomly fried my washing machine. I am still living with no air conditioning and waiting for an electrician to address a fire hazard. In less than a year, that has cost me $2,000 plus that I do not have. Entergy, with their billions in profit, can pay for their own failures after the storm. We deserve utility companies that meet a bare minimum of service. Angel Bradford. I am not in support of a rate increase, especially at this time. Electricity bills already constitute an inappropriate percentage of how much, of much of our salaries incomes. The profit margins in rainy-day funds Entergy has sat on for years must be worth something. Dig into these reserves before coming to your consumers, ratepayers, for funding to cover what Entergy did not plan for. Jessica A. Roberts. My name is Jessica A. Roberts. I live at 2915 Annunciation Street. I'm in favor of utilizing all power available to the council as Entergy's regulatory authority to prevent any rate increases or special assessments being passed on to customers to pay for Entergy's expenses in restoring power to the city. As a resident, taxpayer, and Entergy customer, in the first six months of 2021 alone, I have already experienced two extraordinary bills that no Entergy representative has ever been able to explain, and I fear ever, ever, Entergy customer in the city and region, frankly, is about to experience the same, all to pay for Entergy's own failures and their incurred costs to rectify the same. Entergy is a multi-billion-dollar company and should be required to have adequate safeguards in place to fund its own failures without passing the cost on to customers, and that's why I urge the council to closely question any proposed rate change or special assessment to fund Entergy's restoration of power to the area after their system failures. Thank you. Collins Burke. Having the rates drastically increase in November due to the FRP will be unnecessary, will be an unnecessary burden to New Orleanians reeling from Ida expenses and loss of income revenue due to the pandemic. Diego Villalobos. We have a, we have seen a substantial rate hike on our bill because of Ida, though we didn't have power for a week due to Entergy's failure to inspect and maintain critical infrastructure. We demand that rate hikes be postponed until Entergy's liability is thoroughly investigated. As it stands, it is not clear whether the rate hikes Entergy imposes on us is for actually, is for actually infrastructure improvement and repairs, or if the storm is just a pretense for profit. Hold Entergy accountable. Councilmember, that is the last electronic comment for all matters.